Good afternoon, and we welcome you all to our June 20th, 2024 meeting. This is our second briefing for Thursday, June 27th, 2024, and we do not have any discussion items today, so I will turn the meeting over to Deputy Manager Chantel Robinson.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wiz and Hunt, and good afternoon, Commissioners, staff, and guests. The first item on our agenda is a resolution declaring the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners intent to close an unopened right-of-way off Colchester Drive and calling a date for public hearing on the matter, and we have Matthew Hamby from MAP Forsyth here to brief this item.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
The item should be fairly quick. The county was contacted by Johnny Gross. He has property that adjoins us to the north. He has petitioned us to close an undeveloped right-of-way in the unincorporated area of Forsyth County. The area is approximately 200 by 60 feet, 200 feet by 60 feet. Is the plat where it was recorded, plat book 25, page 194. And here you can see the area between Lot 6 and Lot 5. Here is the ortho image of the area, the hashed area is the area requesting to be closed. And here's a Google Maps image showing the area that is also requested to be closed. I can try to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Are there questions for Matthew? I don't think so. Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Agenda item number two are the meeting minutes. Madam Clerk, has that been emailed out to the board?
No, they will go out tomorrow.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is an amendment to the fiscal year 2324 budget ordinance to appropriate $40,154 of claims proceeds to the Motor Vehicles and Mobile Equipment Replacement Subfund. We have Kim Bussey from Budget and Management here to brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hello.
Again, this is an amendment to the fiscal year 24 budget ordinance. Claims revenue has been received by Forsyth County in fiscal year 24 stemming from one motor vehicle total loss accident involving Sheriff's Office vehicle number 22509, and this amendment will appropriate $40,154 in claims proceeds to the Motor Vehicles and Mobile Equipment Replacement Subfund for the Sheriff's Office to replace the vehicle. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
There are questions? Thank you, Kim.
Okay. Agenda item number four, and several after this, is going to be briefed by our Budget Director Kyle Wolf. Number four is an amendment to the 2022 North Carolina Opioid Settlement Grant Project Ordinance to convert it to the 22 North Carolina Opioid Settlement Project Ordinance.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is really a technical type of correction, changing the North Carolina Opioid Settlement Grant Project Ordinance to really the North Carolina Opioid Settlement Project Ordinance, so eliminating it. We're taking it away from a Jeep, a grant project ordinance, and just changed it to a settlement project ordinance. It's really just, it's partly, part of the way, part of the reason is the way we originally intended for it to be set up, and then there was, you know, some discussions at the state level, but they just recently allowed us to do this as a settlement project ordinance instead of a grant project ordinance, so it's really just technical.
Questions? Mr. Bessey.
Thank you, ma'am. Can you explain the technical difference between grants projects?
I would defer to Terry on that, probably.
Yes, there really is absolutely no difference. The statute that was originally written provided for us to be able to do a capital project ordinance or a grant project ordinance. Grant project ordinances were very specific that they had to be funded by federal or state grants, and technically, this is not. It's settlement proceeds. So at the time, the LGC was seeking a technical correction to allow this additional type of revenue to be under a grant ordinance or a separate type of ordinance, and they have just now, you know, gotten that technical correction in the last session law, and they basically now have three different types of project ordinances we can do, the third one being for settlement funds.
And so the difference between that and a grant, pardon me, a capital projects ordinance is it's not limited to capital projects. It can be programmatic as well.
That is correct. This can be both for operating and capital.
Okay, thank you.
Are there questions? Thank you, Kyle.
Agenda item number five is an amendment to the fiscal year 2324 budget ordinance to appropriate fund balance resulting from fiscal year 2223 sales tax revenue for Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools.
And so, as you know, the Article 46 sales tax revenue that's generated within the county and collected is distributed to the school system as part of our budget process, and so in FY23, the adopted budget for the schools included $18,933,911 of Article 46 revenue, and the actual total was $19,734,663. And so this action is really appropriating the $800,752.05 that came in above what we had budgeted for the Article 46 revenue last year, and transferring it to the school system, again, with these funds being used for teacher supplements. These are funds that the CFO, Ms. Goodman, had reserved in fund balance as part of the FY23 audit that we recently approved.
Questions? Mr. Bessey.
Thank you. So this $800,000 and change would not have been previously available to the schools to be budgeted in what they did.
So, I mean, essentially, the way that we have treated Article 46 is every, as soon as, when the year closes, we will appropriate whatever comes in excess and transfer it to the school system, and then when we budget for the next year, this would not have been, I mean, this is technically part of what we budgeted for FY25, because our FY25 budget, you know, is based on, it's based on what we think we're going to, it's based on what we are projecting Article 46 to be for 25.
So this $800,000 and change in overage from what we anticipated last year, they've, it's already baked into what we appropriated?
Essentially. I mean, if you think about our Article 46 revenue, or, yeah, the Article 46 revenue that we've projected for FY25, it is a little bit, it is higher than what we had budgeted for FY23, or '24, I mean.
But this $800,000 came in, in the current budget year, not?
No, it came in at '23. This is from FY23. We usually would do this kind of action like around November, December, when our audit closes. Our audit was delayed, you know, I mean, we just really did the audit, you know, back in May, I believe it was. That's why we're doing it now.
But, I mean, we, in the budgeting, we assumed that this money was not available for us to use for Pago or other projects, whatever. So it wasn't appropriated by us.
Right. That's correct.
But it's also not revenue coming in next year. It's revenue that came in a while back.
It is revenue that came in, in '23 that we are appropriating now to give to the schools. They will use it, they will put it in, they will, I mean, it will fall, if you remember, the schools actually, when they do their fund balance, or, yeah, when they do their fund balance analysis, they will reserve funds that are for Article 46, for Article 46 revenue, and so it would go to that line.
When they, they spent the $5 million from reserves for supplements in their action earlier this spring, they weren't spending this.
They would not have been using this, although if, when I was looking at that, when I watched that meeting, and when you looked at the, I believe they've got, I believe it was 2.6 million or 2.3 million that they were projecting to have at the end of FY24, maybe, I believe it was, this would basically go on top of that. So it would just, it basically, it would not be this, but unless they need to.
This would be on top of the 2.6 million that they were projecting to have left in reserves.
That's correct, yes.
So this is new, in effect, this is new money to their reserves.
For them, yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? Thank you, Kyle.
Okay. Agenda item number six is an amendment to the Emergency Telephone System Special Revenue Fund to appropriate fund balance to cover prior year encumbrances.
And so this item and the following item, this, again, are basically year-end issues that we typically would have done earlier in the year if the audit, when the audit would typically be done, like around October, November timeframe, and so we are appropriating funds to account for prior year encumbrances in the 911 Fund, and then the next item is in the General Fund. There is a list of contracts that are, that were encumbered and rolled over into the new year. Happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions? Thank you, Kyle.
Kyle just covered six and seven, so now we're on agenda item number eight, and that's an amendment to the 22 Pago Capital Projects Ordinance. It's three parts. B is an amendment to the 2016 Parks and Rec Facilities Capital Projects Ordinance to appropriate funds for the multipurpose agricultural center, and then C is an amendment to the 2018 Smith-Reynolds Airport Capital Projects Ordinance to appropriate funds for various airport projects, and our, and...
Yeah, I was thinking Terry was doing this.
Okay, yeah, I have our CFO, Terry Goodman, is briefing this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is another, just a little cleanup item. When the 22 Pago was adopted, we included funding for, additional funding for the Ag Center, and also some additional projects at the airport. We already have project ordinances set up for those projects, and all we're doing here really is just moving that funding from the Pago to the Smith-Reynolds Airport ordinance, where we already have all of the other airport projects that we are budgeting and accounting for, and then also to the 2016 Parks Facilities, where we had the initial $5 million that we set aside for the Ag Center. So it's really just to facilitate our budgeting and our accounting, and our actually daily execution on those projects, to have them all under one ordinance. No additional funding, nothing new that's being created, just moving it from one ordinance to another.
Could you remind us of the projects at the airport?
I do not have those in front of me. Do you have them there?
They are, I mean, there is a listing of the projects, but it's really improvements to different sites, and I would be, I would prefer, if Mark would probably talk about those a little bit better, but...
So I can say the listing is 3820 North Liberty Improvements, 4400 Lansing Drive Improvements, the Landfull Environmental and Site Preparation, the South Ramp Site Demolition, and the Liberty Street Land Acquisition, but if, we could certainly get Mark Davidson to provide more details at our next meeting.
Ms. Van, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is related to ARPA funding. Agenda item number nine is a resolution authorizing execution of amendments to the agreements with Cure Violence Global, Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods, and the University of North Carolina at Greensboro approving a violence interruption program using ARPA funds, and we have Bailey Arnold, our ARPA Administrator, here to brief this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The first resolution that I'll be going over is the extension and additional funding to the Cure Violence Program. Previously, the Board approved a resolutions to execute contracts with three organizations to administer a violence interruption program following the Cure Violence Model through December 31st, 2024, using ARPA funds in an amount not to exceed $1.5 million. Of that amount, Cure Violence Global was awarded $210,000 to provide training and technical assistance. Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods was awarded $1.8 million, $398,000 to provide implementation, and the University of North Carolina at Greensboro was awarded $159,529 to provide evaluation of the program. In order to effectively spend the awarded ARPA funding and provide additional time for implementation and data collection, Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods has requested an extension to June 30th, 2025, with no additional funding required. Cure Violence Global has also requested an extension to June 30th, 2025, to support the program through the end of the period of implementation by continuing their training and technical assistance. To extend these services, Cure Violence Global has requested additional funding of $43,000, bringing their award to $253,000. UNCG has requested an extension to August 15th, 2025, to continue program evaluation services, which includes time to complete the final report after the conclusion of implementation at the end of June 2025. This extension is necessary to ensure comprehensive and accurate evaluation of the program's effectiveness. It will also allow us to make any necessary adjustments or improvements based on the evaluation findings. To extend these services, UNCG has requested additional funding of $20,500, bringing their award to $180,029. There are two sources that are identified for these requests. First, there is $45,873 of unobligated ARPA funds associated with this program. $43,000 would fund the entirety of the Cure Violence Global request, and $2,873 would go towards funding the UNCG request. An additional source, our Budget and Management team identified as the Gun and Gang Violence Fund, which would fulfill the remaining $17,627, and the total award for the project with additional funding would come to $1,563,500. May I answer any questions?
Questions? Bessey.
Thank you. The only big one that's not funded from some other source in general revenues is the Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods, $1 million. And tell us again exactly what they're going to use it.
Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods is not requesting any additional funding, but they're the implementation part of the project out on the streets.
Pardon me. Thank you.
They just needed additional time.
Yes.
Other questions?
Okay. Agenda item number 10 is a resolution approving execution of an interlocal agreement with the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education to construct a Futsal Court with ARPA funds, and Bailey will brief this item.
Thank you. On July 27th, 2023, the Board approved a resolution to execute an agreement with North Carolina Rush Triad Soccer Club Incorporated to construct the Futsal Court with ARPA funds at Old Town Elementary School. The funds totaled $43,780. However, the organization leadership expressed concern about financing the project on a reimbursement basis and did not sign the contract with the county. Because of this, we explored alternative options to continue with the project, and we contacted the school system to determine interest in directly administering the project, which they accepted on the original ARPA funding amount not to exceed $43,780. This resolution would establish the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education to be the subrecipient of the ARPA funding.
Questions? Thank you, Bailey.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agendas are contracts. Agenda item number 11 is a resolution awarding suballocations and contracts for transportation assistance for elderly and disabled residents, and Andrea Sheets from Community and Economic Development will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I hope you're all doing well. So we'll backtrack a little bit and give an overview of what these funds are. They are very similar to the employment funds you all approved last week. They're from the same program within DOT, from the state. These are just meant to assist the county's elderly and disabled population. They can also get to employment there, but also a lot of health and human service agencies, doctor's appointments, necessary appointments, all of that stuff. And so the city has previously administered these funds, but since we brought those employment funds back internally, just to streamline reporting and the process for everything, we brought these funds back internally as well. So this is a little bit of a different process. We sent out an RFP that was not required, but we did that to determine suballocations. That was to maximize our reach to different organizations and providers across the community. So this is not a standard procurement process, even though we did do an RFP, rewarding suballocations instead of bids. I want to make that pretty clear. And I would like to thank Michaela Westbrook from Budget, Destiny Williams from HHS for their time and insight reviewing those proposals with me. We received 18 proposals. Seven were deemed non-responsive, and four were responsive but were not recommended for funding for various reasons, including their proposals not having a sound intake process, or a method of determining eligibility that was not up to DOT's reporting standards. So from those 18 proposals, we are recommending seven organizations and providers for funding. You can see those in the second table in the resolution. One of them is new, the other six have been funded previously. I do want to make a quick note as well that we have received more funding from the state this year than in previous years, so some of them are above their requested amount. We track monthly expenditures through the reporting process, and so we'll assess throughout the year if we need to reallocate that to make sure all of the organizations are spending their funds effectively, and that contingency has already been communicated to these organizations. So of those seven, the first going in order of size of allocation is TransAid, which is WISTA's paratransit service that operates door-to-door service within three-quarters of a mile of WISTA's fixed route. I do want to note as well that there's an incorrect rate in the resolution. We clarified with their staff, they submitted the wrong rate in their proposal, it is $22.78 per trip instead of per mile, so much more economical. Our money's going to go a little bit further, and we'll get that corrected before you vote on this item next week. And so, so far this year through May, they have done 2,200 trips with these edcap funds, and with this higher amount of funding, we expect them to complete about 3,000 trips at this funding level. After that is the Shepherd Center of Winston-Salem. Their program is a mix of private transportation and using volunteers to meet their clients' needs. The previous allocation has partially funded over 9,900 trips. They do have other funding sources, and their program, their entire program has funded over 15,000 trips this year. After that is the Shepherd Center of Kernersville. With their current allocation, all of their funds are going toward providing services for individuals with very specific needs and who require specialized transportation, and they have to use contracted services. This larger allocation will still fund that, but also serve their population that's supported by volunteers, and that'll take care of their waitlist of about 150 people. Support Systems of Forsyth County, they are the provider that we contracted with for the employment funds. They do, they do medical transport as well, and through that program, they have completed 429 programs as well. Triad Safe Choice is our new provider. They have relationships across the community with dialysis centers, adult day centers, and many senior living facilities. Their vehicles are equipped with wheelchair accessibility, and they seem very committed to doing outreach with their population, ensuring eligibility, so they are our new provider. The Department of Social Services, this funding helps to meet the transportation needs of their adult service clients. Their staff uses this when all public funding options have been exhausted, and they help about 50 clients a month. And the last one is Monarch. They run a day program that serves individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. They have 50 participants total, about 90% of whom are on Medicaid or other state-funded insurance, and again, this helps with otherwise unmet transportation needs across their program. So I know that was a lot of information. What questions do you have?
Valuable information. Thank you. Are there questions, Mr. Bessey?
Ms. Robinson and I had discussed sometime last year the question about where TransAid will go. They, they serve anywhere within three-quarters of a mile of a bus route inside the city. With this funding, will they then be taking a number of trips outside that zone into the county, beyond Winston-Salem city limits?
This funding is not. It sticks with their current operation. I do believe there's another agreement.
Right, so our interlocal agreement with the city outside of these funds, the city has come back and said, effective, I believe it was February, they are starting to provide services outside of the three-fourths of a mile of a bus stop, but our staff has been reconciling the invoices that we've previously paid them for only doing three-fourths of a mile. But for these particular funds, the other organizations will cover outside of, you know, into the county limits, but TransAid is saying they will not. But we're certainly trying to keep close eyes on what they are or not doing, and as you know, the city has selected a new vendor to run WISTA and TransAid, and so we're hopeful that things will improve with that as well.
My question here is, is pretty basic. If the, if the service by TransAid is only being provided within the municipal limits of Winston-Salem, why is the county subsidizing it at this point? Because they'd be providing it anyway, with city funds.
I wish Shai Shekarder was here, because she did an analysis of what they have been doing with each funding source that they have received. Kyle Wolf, do you have that information in front of you? If not, I can definitely send an email with more details.
I don't have it in front of me, but I got my laptop. I can certainly look for it, and we can definitely get it to the board.
I'd be interested to see that. I mean, as you know, I served on Winston-Salem City Council, and that was a part of the city's budget every year, and I don't want to see tax money being double-paid for the same trips, frankly.
That is a valid point. We will absolutely look into that, and if we find that it is duplicative, then we will pull it from this item.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Commissioner Bessey.
Agenda item number 12 is a resolution authorizing execution of a five-year fire and rescue service agreement with the Clemens Fire Department. Damon Sanders Pratt, our Deputy Manager, will brief this item.
Thank you, Miss Manager, Board, Chair. So last meeting, I brought an item about a standard agreement for fire departments that are five-year agreements. They start in FY20, and they run through the end of FY24. So there are 12 of those agreements that are up June 30th, and so I had 11 of them included on the last agenda. There was a substantive attachment to the Clemens Fire Department item, so we're bringing that one back today. So what the item basically does is it changes the term to five years. They're still funded by their tax district proceeds. Residents are served without additional charge for fire and rescue services. They have to comply with open meetings law, just like we do here with the public funds. They provide annual audits to the county. Volunteer departments that would terminate the agreement, or disband, or no longer serve that district, would transfer assets to a successor department that would then serve that area. Again, before committing to purchase, lease, sell, construct, design, capital projects, they are to report those to the Board and get Board approval to do that, because sometimes that impacts the rate in subsequent years. And then, for transparency, it clarified that these contracts could be funded through the overlay district versus the tax district, but when the Board passed the standard item, Dr. Martin submitted alternative language to that section that basically says that before that transfer of funding would occur, in that way, going from a specific district to the overlay district, that there would be a plan that was come up with the fire department chiefs, the county commissioners, and county staff, and if in the subsequent year of using the overlay district, that they received less than they did when they had their own district, that they could terminate the agreement they chose to. So we changed that provision to say that, based on the conversation that was had a couple of weeks ago with some volunteer chiefs. With the Clemens contract, there's an attachment A, and what that does is, it's one exhibit, it basically has the department to report their agendas to the staff, so we know kind of what they're voting on, their public agendas. There will be two meetings with the county manager, or they're designated. There will be two meetings with the county manager or their designated. They would develop a procurement purchasing policy that basically matches what the contract says, and then develop a plan, kind of a corrective financial plan or a plan regarding their capital purchases, whether they are equipment or buildings, and how they were going to how they're going to do that and share that with the board. And then they would report what legal counsel they'll use to review capital purchase contracts. And that's basically the difference between this one and the and the other contracts that were in the standard agreement last time that did not have an attachment A. And so basically, I'm bringing this for the board's consideration as the last of the 12 departments that have five-year agreements to be re-upped, beginning technically July.
Questions? Thank you, Damon.
Agenda item number 13 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of pharmaceuticals by the Forsyth County Pharmacy. Denise Price, our Behavioral Health Services Director, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So you may recall in October of 2023, you authorized the expenditures through Cardinal Health in a multi-purchasing agreement and some smaller organizations for our generic medications in the amount of $3.5 million. That amount stands. That is exactly what we need. But Norkian went from prescription to over-the-counter. So we need to adjust those dollars so that we're allowing for more purchases of over-the-counter medication and less of prescription medication. Specifically, we're looking for authorization to not exceed $3 million for prescription medications, where it was $3.4 million, and for $500,000 for over-the-counter, where it was $100,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Agenda item number 14 is a resolution awarding a contract to PNG security guard doing business as PNG security for contracted private security services at the Forsyth County Law Enforcement Detention Center. Kimberly Bussi from Budget and Management will talk about the budgetary considerations of this, and then Major Henson will talk about the utilization of the contract.
Ashley, I may need you. So Major Henson is here to actually brief this agenda item, I think Shonton just mentioned. But I'm going to give some some context for the for the contract and maybe where we've been in the past and some budget implications, and to talk a little bit about our plans with the office moving forward. All right. So again, this is in reference to the PNG private security contract. A little history about the agreement. It has been in place since fiscal year '22. It provides uniformed security officers to staff the control room in the public lobby of the LEDC. This really was put in place as a result of high vacancies in a post-COVID environment as a response to that need. The BOCC approved, the Board of Commissioners approved, the first agreement on February 17th of 2022, and the contract term started March the 1st. So you see in the chart there below, the the first contract in fiscal year '22 was four months included in that fiscal year '22. And then below, it shows the number of PNG positions that the contract allowed for. So you notice the contract did increase slightly in fiscal year '25. It's going to be a reduction because there is a plan in place to attempt to reduce the number of positions, PNG positions, that the sheriff's office is using, and that's due to a couple of factors we'll talk about in a second. The budgetary impacts here, the PNG private security contract has been fully funded by LEDC salary savings. In fiscal year '25, that will be the case as well, but there are a bit less salary savings available due to the available number of detention officer positions. We reduced the number of positions, just 10 this past Thursday with the adopted FY '25 budget, and then some additional positions for some salary adjustments and a detention records contract this past fiscal year or in fiscal year '24, as well as a lower number of vacancies. So as we're talking about vacancies in the detention center, this gives a picture of where we've been since June of 2021, kind of coming out of COVID, and those vacancies were at 34. They increased a bit in March of 2022, excuse me, yeah, 2022, to about 70. That was the start of this PNG contract at that at that at that point. It did a brief stay at about 100 vacancies in October of '23. We came back down. This fiscal year have been dropping pretty significantly, about 81 in January of this year. In April, we were at 60, and as of yesterday, there were 51 vacancies in the sheriff's office. So that's really great. Great news. So again, currently, we have 51 vacancies in the detention division of the sheriff's office. And as of last Thursday, we will reduce the number of detention officer positions by 10 starting in 2025. So we will have 41 vacant positions that will be contributing to salary savings moving into fiscal year '25. And as that relates to the cost of this contract, the contract is about $2.1 million. And again, you saw that the the plan to decrease includes 30 PNG positions in the first six months of the year, and then down to 20 in the second six months. That's a reduction from 38 previously. But the cost of the contract equates to about 29 new hired detention officer one positions. And so as we think about the use of salary savings, that means we have about 12 vacant positions that are really contributing to salary savings. And so that will require close monitoring of vacancies to make sure that we have salary savings available to pay this contract and to pay any new hires that come on. And so I would propose that we have monthly meetings in fiscal year '25, and I've already been in contact with Major Henson as well as the sheriff's office HR team. I think we should include the business manager at the sheriff's office as well to make sure we're all on the same page and that we're keeping close eye on where we are to make sure we can meet our obligations. Additionally, it may not be a bad plan to have a target. If there are six additional hires in July, that we have a call meeting to see what our options are. And options may be a hiring freeze. It may be a reduction of this contract, an amendment to the contract to reduce people. And I think proceeding with the 30 positions as the contract states that Major Henson's going to review for you does make sense from an operational perspective right now, and I hope he can talk a little bit more about why that's the case. And that will give us some time to, again, to meet with the team, to make sure we have a good plan moving forward that's going to get everybody what they need over for the detention staff. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have now, or I can turn it over to Major Henson to review the item.
Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. In 2022, we implemented this. Obviously, it was due to our extremely low staffing. Over the last two years, our HR department has done an extraordinary job and has dropped our vacancies to 51. We have developed and implemented a plan to draw back our PNG. As of July 1st, we will have it down by down 230, and actually, we have exceeded that and put it at 28 right now. We have put a freeze right now on hiring the PNG. We have 25, and we have two in the holding, kind of the background process right now. And if we if we continue this direction, which is my desire, I have no reason to believe we can't get rid of the contract coming up. As Ms. Bussie said, we sat down and spoke about meeting monthly and trying to, as the unfortunately, it can be a little fluid when I hire. I may hire 10, I may lose 5. So I have to give myself a little bit of leeway, but I have no reason to believe we can't we can't get this to a to a quick, quick, get it over with and get my staff in here, which is what I want. I want certified officers. They do me a lot better. With that, if I can answer any question, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions?
When you talk about the certified officers, I think that we approve, was it officers? I think we, did we approve the officers from the detention center? I may be getting myself a little bit confused.
Approved in four.
Yeah. So you're saying that you don't have any? First of all, let me just confirm, you're with the sheriff's department, right?
Yes, I run the jail.
Right. Not PNG?
No, I'm not with PNG. No, ma'am.
Yeah, it's a PNG question, so I apologize for that.
Yeah, just as a clarification, I'm sorry, we discussed in Budget, a private security contract for with Allied that does courthouse services for us. And so this is a completely separate security contract, separate than what we've discussed thus far on budget. Yeah.
No apologies. My apologies. Thank you.
Other questions? Is that a question on your face or?
I'll go ahead and ask. So when we, as a part of the budget, arranged to use 20 vacancies from the detention center to fund the Jit team?
Yes, sir. 10. We reduced, yes, sir.
Reduced by 10. 10 positions from the detention. By reducing the contract and by the recommended amount, we're not ending up with 10 fewer individuals, people staffing the detention center, are we?
No, sir, I'm not. They didn't take 10 people. They took 10 PCNs. So I lost I lost the 10 positions. I won't have those positions.
You won't have the positions. Are you utilizing them now?
Well, no, sir. Our vacancy count right now is 51, so I don't have those 51 positions. And when they take the 10, it'll be 41.
Yes, but what I mean is that you don't have people under contract from PNG actually in the detention center out of those 10 positions that that you lost, do you? Do you see what I'm asking?
I'm sorry, Ms. Bessie. I don't. I'm sorry.
My understanding from the conversation last week is that what we did was not going to result in 10 fewer bodies working the detention center than we have right now.
So those were 10 vacancies? So there were no one in those positions that were taken, that were eliminated?
And we weren't, we weren't already using PNG contract personnel to fill those 10 positions, were we?
No, sir. I had, I had, as I said, I had 51 positions, and I have, right now, I have 27 PNG. So no, sir, those vacancies are still there.
Very good. I just wanted to make sure we weren't actually inadvertently reducing the number of people we had working in the detention center as staff. Okay.
Thank you for the concern and question. Thanks, sir. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 15 is a resolution awarding and authorizing execution of a contract with Wake Forest University Baptist Medical Center doing business as Atrium Health, Wake Forest Baptist, on behalf of its best health for business and first responder chaplaincy programs for employee crisis and intervention support services. And our HR director, Shannon Hutchins, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. In April of this year, Human Resources worked with the city-county purchasing department to solicit proposals from qualified firms to provide employee crisis and intervention support services. The county received two proposals from that process. Atrium, Atrium Health, Wake Forest Baptist, first responder chaplaincy program submitted the lowest proposed cost, also meeting the specifications of the RFP. This resolution authorizes the execution of a contract between the county and Atrium Health, Wake Forest Baptist, for crisis and intervention support services beginning July 1st, 2024, for a total amount not to exceed $360,442 during a three-year term ending on June 30th, 2027. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 16 is a resolution authorizing execution of an interlocal agreement with the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education for lease of county-owned property located at 3730 North Liberty Street. And our Deputy General Services Director, Kirby Robinson, will brief this item.
Good afternoon, Madam Vice Chair and Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this item to you today. As background and as, there it goes, as background, as the board may recall, in March of 2023, you authorized construction of an addition to the county's Automotive Services Center, and that's, of course, on North Liberty Street. And the intended use of that was for the School Systems Fleet Maintenance Division, which is currently located on Lansing Drive. The contract was awarded to Dreambuilt Construction. It had a not-to-exceed amount of $939,000, and we finished that project in April. We've been working with the school system since that time to really refine kind of a move-in schedule. And I'll say that the fleet expansion facility is really the last piece of the co-location and maintenance services project. And there are a couple of pictures here on the right side of your screen. That's the inside of the expansion facility. And then down at the bottom, that's kind of the facade there with five service bays. In terms of the proposed lease that's in front of you today, the premises, of course, is that expansion facility. It's a 3,600-square-foot building. It includes a parts room, an office, and five service bays. The lease also gives the tenant, which is the school system, of course, access to common areas within the county's facility, which include break rooms, bathrooms, and one additional service bay. So that's really an example of the two groups working together to co-locate. We're actually sharing a bay that has mutual benefits for both of us. They brought a lift, and we brought the bay. So it's a, it's a, it's a good project, and we're working well together to make that happen. The agreement also includes exclusive use of roughly 55 parking spaces. You can kind of see that on the right side of your screen. This is the county's Automotive Services Facility here. This is where the expansion facility was constructed. There's a couple parking spaces here. It's kind of like a drop-off zone when you're coming there. And here's where the school system, the majority of their vehicles are parked kind of in front of the county's warehouse. And so the flow of that complex has sort of changed. You know, if you're somebody that works for the county or the school system, this is kind of your main entrance now, and you're going to pull in, and you can turn left. If you're a county, in a county vehicle, you can go straight and turn left again if you're in a school system vehicle. So that that facility and that complex has changed, but I think it's sort of symbiotic, and it's working well the way the way that it's sort of been altered. The term of that agreement would start, if the board approves it, upon full execution. It would continue through November 10th of 2032. That date is the termination date of the old Piedmont Advantage Credit Union Building that the board leased to the school system, as well as the larger interlocal agreement. So we're really synced all three of those agreements up. The rental is proposed at $7 a square foot, $25,000 a year. I'll say that is really just cost recovery on the county's side for utilities, solid waste removal, and insurance. Those are costs that presumably the school system are paying now at Lansing, and they just shift over to the county. In terms of services, the landlord, which is, of course, the county, will be responsible for major repairs to the premises. That's things like structural HVAC, underslab repairs. We'll provide grounds maintenance services and trash removal. Services by the tenant would be routine maintenance. So you know, if the light bulb goes out or something like that, the school system will take care of that. Janitorial, removal of auto parts and tires, and maintenance of the lifts and the tanks that are in the facility. There it goes. All right. So in summary, and this is really kind of a summary of the co-location project as a whole, you know, the Lansing Drive property closed, I think, in June of 2021, so really at the three-year mark, which is kind of neat. The sale required the school system to exit the property roughly by this August. You know, since that time, the board has made a significant investment really in co-location and maintenance services. And I was thinking back through that today, just all of the things that you've done over the last couple of years. And you know, you bought the 3810 North Liberty Street building, which is 17,000 square feet, and they are occupying that facility now. You bought the C-Mex property. It's 3.7 acres of open-air storage. We've constructed the addition to the fleet facility, and then you've made an additional $1.3 million investment in school system-related facility improvements. So that's just a really neat package of projects. We're, of course, working with the school system now to finalize their move-out. We hope to be out of Lansing by the 1st or mid-July, and I'll just kind of really compliment the school system. And I think Daryl's back there now. They've done an awesome job of just working through some challenging things there, and I'm sort of looking forward to us working with them into the future. Happy to answer any questions the board has.
Questions? Daryl, do you have any remarks? Not to put you on the spot.
I need to thank this guy right here. He's been very patient with us through this process. It has not been an easy process to kind of get through all the, every years up over there to Mr. Attorney, but going through all the legal memo jumbo. there to Mr. Attorney, but going through all the legal jumbo stuff that goes into that's been a little bit of a challenge. But a lot of that's been on our side, but it's been a great partnership. We are totally out of Lansing Drive at this point. Surprise, surprise. So we're going to walk through there tomorrow to kind of finalize some things, but for the most part, all of our trades guys are now at Indiana Avenue.
Thank you, Daryl. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item numbers 17 through 36 are appointments. Madam clerk, when did the applications close?
Applications closed on Monday at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Agenda items number 37 through 39 are refunds by the tax assessor collector. The first one's in the amount of $14,752.74 from the North Carolina Vehicle Tax System. Agenda item 38 is a refund in the amount of $873.58 for assessor refunds, and 39 is a refund in the amount of $13,521.2 from the vehicle tax system. And then agenda item number 40 is the May 2024 Contribution-Based Benefit Cap Report. And that is all I have. Vice Chair, Wiz and Hunt.
Okay, and I think that we're going to proceed with item 41 today, which is a proclamation that's going to be read by Commissioner Linville for Mr. Pliler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rita, proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, recognizing the accomplishments of Commissioner David R. Pliler on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas David R. Pliler, who is a native of Orange County, California, and longtime resident of Kernersville, was the first elected to the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners November 1994. Whereas Commissioner Pliler served as chairman of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners 2008, 2010, and 2014 to 2022. Whereas Commissioner Pliler honorably served in the United States Air Force, 1960 to 64, where he worked in air command and armed services, radio and television. Whereas Commissioner Pliler has served the citizens of Forsyth County since 1960 through his broadcasting career at WSJS, WXII, 12, WTOB, Salem Media, and Truth and Broadcasting. Whereas Commissioner Pliler has served on the boards of Novant Health, YMCA of Northwest North Carolina, and IFB Solutions, Governor's Task Force on Osteoporosis, Forsyth County Board of Public Health, National Association of County Counties, NACO, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, the National YMCA Board, NC Energy Policy Commission, Crime Stoppers, Bloomington Jewish Home for the Aged, and Kernersville Lions Club. Commissioner Pliler is a lifetime member of Oasis Shrine 32nd Degree Mason, member of the Kernersville Chamber of Commerce, and a member of the Kernersville United Methodist Whereas Commissioner Pliler is the recipient of the Abe Lincoln Award of Exceptional Broadcasting, the Humanitarian Award from the North Carolina Association of Black County Officials, the Community Service Award from the Kernersville Chamber of Commerce, and was recognized as Outstanding County Commissioner in 2003 by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Forsyth County Commissioners hereby recognize the exemplary service and accomplishments of Commissioner David R. Pliler, and thank him for his outstanding and distinguished service as a member of Forsyth Board of Commissioners this day, 20th day of June 24. And I have something else from Mr. Pliler. Just hold still. I want to show you this. This is proclamation in the frame, and this frame was constructed by a talented manager, Dudley Watts. He's a, I wouldn't care about making frames, but one thing he can do that I wouldn't mind knowing how to do, that's to play a musical instrument. He plays guitar. I would like to do that. So this is made out of, I wouldn't have any idea where he got the boards that he made this out of, but they're boards that came from either an old building or either maybe a cabinet or something, and he turned it into this nice frame. Commissioner Pliler, I present this to you on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, and also thank County Manager Dudley Watts for this, I guess, I don't know whether he put his name on the back anywhere, manufactured by Mr. Watts, but that's who did. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Linville very much and Dudley Watts as well. Dudley has a weight in that, weighs about 100 pounds, so, but I greatly appreciate it and for the kind words, and it means a lot to me. And I've thoroughly enjoyed my career as a member of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, representing, in my own mind, some of the finest people in the world, and they all live in Forsyth County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Commissioner Pliler will make further remarks at his reception, and then I'm going to call on the commissioners. But first of all, I think we have our state treasurer in the room. Would you like to make some remarks, please? We're happy to have you here today. You bring us some money, and we do something?
Your clerk told me to be here.
Oh.
That's why I'm here. So anyway, congratulations, Dave. You and I have known each other a long time. I'm proud of your public service, and also Nancy's, as your spouse. You know, it's not just the people who get these plaques, it's the spouses of public servants. And as a lifelong Winston-Salem resident, I'm glad that you do not do what Dan Bessie's done for the last 30 years, and that is run through my neighborhood without a shirt on.
I stopped doing that a while back.
Oh, you did? Okay. So congratulations to you, and the people in Raleigh recognize how you've always tried to advocate for the invisible of this county. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for being here. Other commissioners or their remarks, or had you rather wait for the reception? Okay, we're going to wait for the reception then.
Madam Vice Chair, we also have a video that has Chairman Martin and Dudley Watts in it.
Great, okay.
Commissioner Pliler, I am sorry that I am not able to be with you today. I'm actually up at the North Carolina City and County Managers Conference. Got a piece on the program that they've asked me to do, and I did, I said I'd do it a long time ago, but I just want to thank you for all your years of service. I want to thank you for the levity that you've always brought into the room. I want to thank you for that amazing voice that always resonated with that radio and TV voice, and just want to thank you for how much you love county government, how much you love the folks that work and do, provide the services every day. And congratulations. I will be coming by your house, and we will spend some time together since I'll be retired as well. So just look forward to that and, and have a great day.
Dave, I'm sorry I can't attend your retirement reception today in person, but Rita and I are in Shawnee, Kansas, with two of our three children's families. I do want to say that it has been my pleasure to associate with you for over 30 years. And we worked together during most of my 19 years as superintendent, and we also have worked together the past 10 years on the county commission. During my campaign for office 10 years ago, you introduced me to several community members in Kernersville and in Lewisville, and actually made it possible for me to visit with several groups that I wouldn't have had an opportunity to see. You also told me it would be a good idea to have some ballpoint pens printed up with my name on it, and I did. And you actually went with me to a couple of locations where you had been allowed to distribute those before and, and helped me do that. So I am deeply indebted for the campaign help that you provided me during that time. You and I have agreed on most issues over the past 10 years, and we've had the opportunity, really, to become good friends. I really appreciated learning about your past experience as a broadcaster and as a young man. And I still marvel at how well that you're able to remember TV shows and songs and music from the 50s and 60s. And not only do you remember the words, but you remember the playtime it takes down to the second from your days actually serving as a DJ on the radio. You frequently refer to the loss of your sweet wife, Nancy, and I know that you think about her every day and miss her very much. But you are very fortunate to be surrounded by a very caring family who supports you in many ways. I do want to say that myself and all of our county commissioners have enjoyed getting to know your son-in-law, Ryan, who has actually brought you back and forth to a number of commissioner meetings, regular meetings, and have actually accompanied you on a couple of commission trips. There comes a time in all of our lives when we have to decide to retire, retire, make that final retirement. And I know that that was a hard decision for you to make, but I want you to know that I really admire you for making it. I do want you to know that you and I will not become strangers. I'll certainly be over to Kernersville to visit you whenever I can, and we'll stay in touch. And Rita and I certainly wish you very best in your retirement.